Twenty twenty-three, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening. Myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly, Vice Chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger, our Secretary, Janet La Forge is joining us via telephone this evening. Regular member Commissioner, Ms. Lisa Temple, is here this evening. Alternative Member Commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer, is here this evening. Alternative Member Commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs is here this evening. Good evening, Richard. Alternative Member Commissioner Elijah Hewling is here this evening. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lawley, is here this evening. And our new and very excellent Reporting Secretary Cassandra Varian is here this evening. Absent tonight is regular member Nahid Kaisar. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor of it or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Okay, since we have a regular member absent this evening, Larry, would you like to be on the first application? Three Oldwoods Road, Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-five, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. Elijah, could you please be on the second application? Sixty-nine Optuso Road, Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-six, sir? And Mr. Briggs, Christian Briggs, could you please be on the third application, which is thirty-three A Carmen Hill Road, Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. So let's start with the review of the minutes. I'll take the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? I have a little bit on it.
No comments.
Nothing? Okay. I wanted to break it apart, and I don't know what's better. If we break it apart into two votes, I just have a couple of different amendments that I saw from the first meeting, the other one, or group them together. What do you think's better?
Group them together, I think that's fine. So what do you?
Okay, all right. On the June fifth, twenty twenty-three, meeting, on the second page, it's small, but I wanted to correct it. One, two, second paragraph down, I was saying Horseshoe Lane, and it should be Horseshoe Drive, that was my mistake. Same thing a little bit farther in the same paragraph. I said Lane, it should be Drive, and then the next paragraph down. There's two of them there. It said Lane, I should have said Drive, that was my goof. I'd like to amend that, please. On the third page, I said, I pronounced his name wrong. It's Vercirca, and I spelled it or said it incorrectly, but I just wanted to make sure that the name was spelled correctly. And that is in the really first main paragraph. And on the fourth page, one, two, third, small paragraph down. The variance was denied, but it was without prejudice, and I thought that should be in the record because that was the correct way that we did it. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to amend that. On page five, only one thing on that. One, two, third, third paragraph down, let me see. Third paragraph down, one, two, third line down. Okay, it says, Mr. McCarthy, to discuss, this is myself, Chairman Donnelly. I'll just read it out. Chairman Donnelly explained how he called Mr. McCarthy to discuss, request permission to visit the site in regards to his application. I wanted that added in there. And then, next line down, it said denied knowing about and about the project and I want, he wanted the application null and void, but he never authorized any application. I wanted that afterward and because I double-checked that in the video, and that's what I said. And then, right at, right after the last part of the line, there are McCarthy and his lawyer, okay. Right, right after it says to his lawyer, and I did double-check this in the video, and I did say this, Chairman Donnelly, myself, I verified that Mr. McCarthy is the property, the legal property owner, and that the conservatorship is no longer in place. I just wanted that added to the record. And then, on the next page, six, I did not see what the hardships were on fifty-eight Indian Grove Road, one, two, three, four, fifth one down. I just thought that we should add the hardships, which were topography, septic, excuse me, septic and unique shape of property. And then, the same thing on the hardships on the last one, and I did double-check the video. So on page seven, at the very end, Vice Chairman, your second emotion, the motion was carried in inadvisably, the hardship was septic in the well. So I wanted to make sure that that septic was in there. And that was on Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-three, fifty-eight Iron Works Hill Road. Is that ring of all of you?
Here.
All right, going on to the special meeting. Okay, page two, one, two, three, four. All right. Let's see. Seven minutes, new events, okay. That's pretty minor, even though, all right. The very last big paragraph, where it says, zoning commission has no obligation to revisit the permit regardless of the board's decision on this appeal. Chairman's, Chairman Donnelly stated that we can put a line, a time limit on it. This was during our discussion, that we can put a time limit on it, and that would put a stay on it, and we have a wide range of options. That was just very small. And then, the very last thing, which is page three. Right at the top, where it says, which Chairman Donnelly disagreed, this, I believe, and I'm going to give it verbatim exactly the way I said it because I think it's important. It was a discussion when I was going back after the land use director had spoke. It should say Chairman Donnelly respectfully disagreed, and exactly what I said verbatim was not as I read it and how I interpret the law. If any new evidence comes to our concern, and there's any safety concern and has to do with life, safety, health, or general welfare of the public, that's our purview, that's what we do on the ZBA. That's what we all sworn up to do, that's exactly what I said. That is it. Okay. So, would you take, would you take a motion to amend it as discussed, or?
Sure.
Okay, let's take a motion to amend the minutes from the June fifth, twenty twenty-three. And...
Chairman, I think that McCarthy, she should do a search to correct the spelling. I'm not sure.
I didn't double-check that.
M-C-C-A-R-T-H-Y?
I think that's correct.
Or N-C-T-A-R-T-Y?
We can double-check.
McCarthy, it's McCarthy.
McCarthy, McCarthy.
T-Y.
Okay, T-Y. All right, so I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes as amended for June fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, and the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting. So moved, do I have a second? All those in favor, you were at the other meeting, you want to be on well?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any discussion on any of the other boards and minutes? We don't have anything on that. Okay. Let's go to our first application. All right, our first application is Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-five. Wag, I'm going to try and say correctly, Wagner Alvez Pereira, three Oldwoods Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. And this is a two-car garage. Is the applicant or proponent of the applicant here? Okay, they're not, they're not here right now. So we can still, you can get this, no problem, right?
No.
No. No, you make a motion to continue.
Okay, let's make a motion to continue.
Motion to continue, where is it?
Larry, you're on this one.
Motion to continue, Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
That is continued. All right, moving on to our second application. All right, so application Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-six. Jim Russell resident, sixty-eight Optus Hill Road. This is a twelve-by-twenty-four shed. Is the applicant or proponent of the applicant here? I know he is.
I am here.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
Okay. Should I sit here, or just?
Whatever you're most comfortable with.
So, my name is Jim Russell. I live at sixty-nine Optus Hill Road.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Russell.
Thank you for seeing me. I'm here because I have put in a request for a variance to put a shed in the rear of my lot. The shed is twelve by twenty-four, and I know that the, I checked, and as we all know, the setbacks are fifty feet from the rear and from the sides. I had the lot surveyed when this all started. You have the packets, do each one of you have the packets?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've sent, I've sent letters to all my surrounding neighbors, to my letters. I have three letters from my immediate surrounding neighbors.
We are going to read them in the record. The secretary will read them in the record shortly, so.
Okay. I have the letters, and in fact, one of my neighbors showed up tonight, which I did not ask for, but she so graciously came here tonight to help me out. So, where you want me to place this with the fifty-foot setback? If you look in your packets.
I have this map that I did a bunch of drawing on. You want me to look at a different one?
I'd like to just look at the photo number one. Have you noticed that this photo was taken, these photos were taken by a drone, a photographer with a drone, and he photoshopped in the area where that shed would sit in the fifty-foot setback area. If you notice, the house on the left is very adamant about me not putting a shed here.
That's, that's the Sasquatch.
Correct, and that's number two Fernbrook Drive. The name is Ronnie Gray, Veronica Gray. She's very adamant, she did not want to look out her back window or her side window and see that shed where that's showing it in the location proposed by the town. And the person that came with us tonight lives at number four Fernbrook, Dolores Grunman, and her son is here also, Kevin. And she really didn't like the looks of that as well. Looking down from her screened-in porch, you can see that area as well. And then, the third neighbor to the right of me sits up much higher than my property, and she looks down into the backyard, and she, she didn't, she liked, she wasn't adamant about me not putting it there, but she liked my location, my proposed location, much better, where she would not see it at all. So if you go to photo three, again, it's photo, this shed, I didn't put it there yet, I promise.
It looks real.
The shed is photoshopped in there, and this is my desired location. And you can see it's kind of tucked in the trees, and it's just, it's just a better fit. And it's a better fit for, you know, you ask for a hardship. I believe that I have, I don't know if it's a hardship, but I believe I have two good, strong reasons for putting the shed there. And number one is, in photo number three, and one, and even in two, you can see there's an outcropping of rocks. It's actually ledge, and the rocks are just sticking up at that point. But I took a hard bar and tried to go down. It would be, I would probably have to blast to put eight inches of crushed stone underneath the shed. By the time I got, I wouldn't be able to excavate there. That was one, and the other is what we just talked about. I'm trying to be a good neighbor. We just bought the house a few, a couple of months ago. It was a family house, my aunt and uncle had lived there for sixty years. And I just want to continue to be a good neighbor to all of these people. So that is the reason I want to put it in that location, in photo number three.
Russell, you're talking about all the little white dots, basically, everywhere on them?
It's all ledge, yeah, they're all cropping up through the grass, you can see. I sharpened my lawnmower blades there, and, just kidding, but, anyway. So that is the reason I want to, I'm trying to get this variance, so that I can continue to be a good neighbor and keep a neat yard for my neighbors and just have a good relationship there.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Adam, Secretary, you have some correspondence you'd like to read into the record?
Yes, I do. I have one correspondence from Elizabeth Emerson, dated June thirteenth, in favor of Mr. Russell. She lives at sixty-seven Optus Hill Road. My next-door neighbor, Mr. Jim Russell, has applied for a variance to place a shed in the rear of his house. He has explained to me where he wants to place the shed, and I am very much in favor of this location. I will be in, in my line of sight, oh, it will not be in my line of sight. It will be tucked behind several trees. I am in favor of the location. Please consider Mr. Russell's application for a variance. I also have one from Veronica Gray, dated June twelfth, also in favor of the shed of the variance. And she lives at twelve Fernbrook Drive in the field. And she is trying to, oh, he's trying to install the twelve-by-twenty-four shed in his backyard. Mr. Russell is applying for a variance to tuck the shed further into the corner of his property. I am writing to get my approval of where he has proposed place the shed. He proposed location will place the shed out of my direct line of sight and is a much more suitable location. I hope you will have consideration for Mr. Russell's variance. Also, a letter in favor of, from Dolores Grudman, dated June twelfth, who lives at four Fernbrook Drive. And she is applying, and she, my neighbor, Mr. Russell, is applying for a variance to install a shed in his backyard. My property borders Mr. Russell's backyard. I am in favor of Mr. Russell's proposed location of the shed. By placing the shed in this proposed location, proposed location, it would keep my line of sight open and free of any obstruction. I hope you will consider the variance of the location of Mr. Russell, Russell's shed. And that is the three letters in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam.
For Mr. Russell's variance.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, are there any questions for the applicant? Would you like to go first?
Well, I have one, I guess. There's a variance on the right side as well as to the back of the property, thirty-eight, thirty, it was thirty feet on thirty-eight. Is there any possibility of moving the shed in a way that that, that the right side variance would be less, or not?
I could probably move it another, maybe four feet, four feet more.
To the west, you're talking about?
To the east.
To the east, to the east.
To the east.
Do you need to excavate in order to place the shed? I didn't think that that was a...
Yeah, it's, you know, twelve-by-twenty-four shed is pretty heavy, and you need to set, you need to get it level to have it right.
Ten-inch base, I think you were mentioning on the board.
At least eight-inch base. They're saying, the people at the barnyard where I'm purchased, where I will purchase the shed, they said I should dig it out eight inches down and put, take the soil out and put three-quarter inch trap rock or crushed stone to level it, and then that will keep it secure from, you know, once I level it, and it's pretty much going to stay there. It won't.
And that provides drainage for it, right?
That provides drainage also for the shed, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it's my understanding that by digging it out and putting crushed gravel there, you're creating a pit for water to sit in. So the crushed gravel above grade, so the water runs away, would be a better suited fit for that specific application. Twelve-by-twenty-four, that's a big shed.
It's a pretty big shed, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big shed.
Yeah.
And the zoning variance on looks is basically what you're talking about. Variants are based on looks.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I just don't see any hardship there.
Well, to, I mean, sometimes when we grant a variance, we ask them to shield whatever, the shed or whatever the case may be, right? I, tell us about, is the ledge, would that prevent you from planting any trees or any kind of shielding shrub tree or whatever?
There are trees in front of where the shed is hopefully going to go.
Right there, you're talking about?
There's, there's the trees on.
Number three.
Photo number three. I could maybe plant some more shrubs around the, around the shed in the proposed location, but it would be, it would be difficult to plant trees out, you know, in the, in the location proposed by the town because of this, because of the ledge there. I couldn't dig very deep at all, so if it was maybe, maybe some low-growing shrubs, but definitely not a tree, it would never take. And I've done landscaping in the past, I had a small landscape business, and I've planted many trees, and I can tell you that that's, it's not going to work there. So, you know, I can cover it up a little bit more where, where I'm proposing to put it. I think I, you know, pretty much camouflage it, really, you know, if I needed to. If that's what you're saying, I have to do.
I've got a question. The hardship, in order to define a hardship, can we consider the neighbor's hardship? Because really, in this case, it's the neighbors that are...
Yeah, I believe the hardship has to be of the land.
It has to be on the land, it can't be, yeah.
I did see some hardships on the property, but I wanted everybody else to speak first. Are you having any questions, sir?
Yeah, that's all, just before man.
I think everyone else has asked any questions, everything.
Madam Secretary, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do. The obstruction of your neighbors, Mr. Russell, both on the right and left, is that in their backyard?
It, it, the house on the left, it is in the backyard of the house on the left at number two. And you said it was number twelve, it's number two Fernbrook Drive.
Is it easier to describe it by, by using one of the photos to her? She's on the phone.
Looking at the photos, the house to the left.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's the rear lawn.
I'm not quite sure that's a hardship, though. But I think that was mentioned by one of our board members.
Yes.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any further questions?
If cedar trees are shallow rooted, then suited for ledge.
Cedar trees might, might work, but, I mean, if I had to, I would, but I, I'm thrilled about cedar trees, but whatever you tell me I have to do, I'll do, that's it.
I'm good.
I do have one question, actually. It seems looking at the land survey that, I mean, your usable area for building is rather small, given the R-AD restriction. I'm not sure if you would know, but do you know, have to know neighbors or surrounding areas? Are their lots all approximately the same size, or is this unusually small?
I think, I think they're, some are even smaller. I think Fernbrook Drive and this house that I live in now were developed, I believe, by Montesi years ago. This is sixty years.
Yes, Artie Montesi was the developer. His house was first nineteen sixty-four.
Nineteen sixty-four.
Ours was sixty-five. The lots are irregular shape, but in general, one acre would be a good guess.
I'm sorry, could you name an address for the record?
Kevin Grunman, four Fernbrook Drive.
In a little bit, we'll ask for people to speak in favor or opposition, so you'll be, you'll get a chance to say. Do any other members have any other questions?
Do you need a shed this size?
Pardon me?
The shed seems to be pretty big based on the dimensions.
It is pretty big. I have a large lawnmower. The lawnmower's seventy-two inches wide, and it's, it's got a vacuum system on it. You know, I can't keep it in my garage any longer.
Is that like one of those commercial big?
It's a commercial mower, yeah. I used to have a landscape business.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Sure.
All right. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to go out and look at your property. I really appreciate it.
You're coming out.
I have a map, if you can look at it with me and just verify it, let me know if it's okay. So, as I went out and looked at your house, here's Optus Hill Road here, there's a driveway to come on, but I went back to look at the proposed location for the shed. One thing that really, really stuck out to me, I mean, I saw it pretty much all the way along the west side of here that I was coming in, but there was numerous, I kind of started drawing them in, but there were so many, I didn't draw them all in, but there was a lot, a lot of ledge. This is a big boulder right here, but there's ledge, ledge, ledge.
It's all.
This kind of ledge all over the place, and even going back over this way, there's a ledge. And then, right behind here, roughly centered on the house back, that's where your well is, sir?
Yes.
Okay, that's your well. And then, I just noted there, some of the trees that were around the location, you had some white birches and stuff like that. Does that look familiar?
It does, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So, there's a lot of ledge on the property, and I understand with Mr. Rushmeyer said, Commissioner Rushmeyer said, we can go over that later on. But there's clearly, ledge is a big hardship. He's got the well, which limits his location of where he can put stuff in the backyard. I believe he just redid, they did not have the new septic as been on file. They had the old one, but I believe he just had your septic done, which is in the whole front of the house, wouldn't want there anyways, but that's, that's kind of out of question. But the ledge and then this location there, that's just something that I did see. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Does any other members have any other questions?
I do want to understand Mr. Rushmeyer's point a little bit better.
The raising?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
So, the, by digging a hole and putting gravel in it, water would go into the hole.
That makes sense.
By putting the structure above grade, it's a shed, it's not a foundation. So it sits on blocks, that's the least amount of water. And as far as the ledge goes, and you were to, actually, it's a plus because you can pin the ledge and pour a little foot, concrete foot on it, and set the building on that, and that's probably the strongest structure.
It is.
So, that's a case where ledge can help. Correct.
Thank you, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask, do you have anything else? And if there's any other questions that you have, so. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application.
I'm Dolores Grunman, I own the house next to Mr. Russell's house.
Your address for the record, please.
Four Fernbrook Drive.
Thank you very much, you have the floor, ma'am.
Well, I'd like my son to speak for me. I'm eighty-seven years old, he's a much better speaker than I am, but.
That sounded great to me.
Would you mind?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Kevin Grunman, I live in Gainesville, Florida.
Yes, sir.
I grew up in the house. I served for a few years. I served for a few years on the board of directors of my subdivision. So I know all about setback lines and their value. This is an interesting situation where the setback line actually causes hardship to the houses surrounding the shed because it places it far more in view. So the variance would please my mom, Veronica, and Elizabeth, who lives above, as well as Jim, who also doesn't want the shed fairly close to his house's back porch. On the shared border between my mom's house and his, those are conifers that are growing. Years ago, they were planted, so they're mature, 25 to 30 feet. They stay, you know, green. There are no leaves. They don't drop their leaves year round. So we're set to go, for the most part, when my mom sits on the porch or on the dining room table, we would barely see the shed.
The location that he has it now?
In the location where you want the variance. But if it's moved to comply with the setbacks, it comes into full view. And then you've got Veronica, my mom, and Elizabeth, and Jim unhappy with the location. So that ultimately is driving the variance from the setback line.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Hearing none. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Do any commissioners have any further questions for the public hearing? I just had one question. Would it help you if I did pull it up on the GIS and you could look at it and maybe explain that location a little bit better? So before we close the public hearing, then I can't do it if it helps.
Do you understand what I'm trying to do?
Sure. There you go. And I'm just guesstimating here, but the proposed location is somewhere around thereish? Feel free, you can use the computer, whatever you like, to explain, sir. It's okay. The mouse, you want to move it up here? Just, it's easier on the...
It's easier up here?
Yeah.
Get it back to there?
Yeah, I'm telling you, isn't it somewhere to the right? About here?
Down, down, down to the left, to the left. Right in the end, like that.
That about here?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the location of the proposed shed.
Yeah.
And what you were saying before, sir, is if it was up here and within the setbacks, they're staring at it, right?
Yes. Veronica, it comes into plain view from my mom's porch. What you can't see on the map are all the trees and obstacles. But on my mom's porch and dining room table, if it goes into the legal setback, it's placed legally, it would come into full view for her. And it would also come in, to some degree, to a view on Elizabeth's home on the hill, yes. The saying comes to mind, it would stick out like a sore thumb as opposed to the variance where the sore thumb goes away.
Yes, thank you very, very much.
Is the, the distance between the desired location and the legal location that is indicated on this picture inside, in fact, 20 feet, about this thing?
It's, it would be...
So he's talking about right here, here to there?
That would be, I'm looking for 20 feet. It's a 50-foot setback, so it would be 30 feet from the setback. The edge of the barn, shed, whatever you want to call it. It would be 30 feet from the back line. And from the sideline, looking for 12 feet of...
Right. But I'm, my question is not that. It's, if you look at the, this location here, what's the distance between this location and that location?
Is that on the preferred location?
In that, the town location is 50 feet.
It's 50 feet to the back, to the back edge of here you're talking about?
Yes.
So it is, so that is 20 feet.
So that shed is...
Yeah, that's got to be the point. It would look like more.
It looks like more in that picture it does. The Photoshop is a little off.
Anybody else have any questions?
On the survey, it's correct, right to the foot, right to the inch.
At this time, I would like to give you the opportunity to have any concluding remarks whatsoever.
Mr. Russell? I just hope that you see what we're trying to do. I know money has nothing to play here. There's no excuse for money. But I have spent a lot of money getting this survey done. Application fees, comp fees, all this added up quick. I'm just, just trying to give you clearance and I hope that you see, you know, our, our plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for seeing me.
Thank you very much. Okay, this time, I'd like to take the motion to close the public hearing. Z dash 23 dash 26. Round second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Moving on to our third application. Application C dash 23 dash 24, which is Kristen and Justin Giuliano, 33A Carmen Hill Road, and that is a barn with living quarters. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you hear him, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and tell us about your appeal in detail.
Justin Giuliano.
Welcome to the Zone of Water Appeals again.
Again, yeah, 33A Carmen Hill Road, Brookfield, Connecticut.
Yes, sir.
One thing I did notice, I don't know if I thought that wrong or we, it says I'm here. It says I'm looking for 10 feet from the front yard line. I'm looking for 40 feet to the front yard line and 10 foot variance. I think I read right.
Yeah, propose, propose to mention 40.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm like, oh my gosh, hold on to that. I'm actually for everything.
Okay. You have the floor, sir.
So I'm looking, again, last time I was here, I was looking for 30 feet and 1,200 square foot living space. And I realized I can make it work with 40 feet to the front yard line rather than 30 feet. So I made a 10-foot exception and 1,120 square feet of living quarters rather than 1,200 square foot of living quarters. I did find out in the last meeting, somebody mentioned that the town did approve in the past like 1,190 square feet living quarters. So I don't think I'm too far off, at least down below that, above that.
And this is 1,120 here?
1,120, yes, yep, yep. And I want to put it in my front yard, of course, in my backyard because my septic is in the back. So that's why we can't put it in the back, etc.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence to read into the record? I believe there's one, right?
Yes, we do. We have the same correspondence from Alicia Alva dated May 25th. And she sent an email to Mr., to Amy Curran at the town hall confirming that she still feels the same way. My name is Alicia Alvarezza and I live at 33 Carmen Hill Road in Brookfield. I spoke with my neighbor, Justin Julio, who requested a variance at the below address. I support this variance request and do not have any concerns regarding it. I believe I read this into the record when Mr. Julio was before us the last time, I'm trying to think of when it was, May, was it May 25th? I'm not quite sure. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. This time, I'd like to ask if there's any members that have any questions. I wouldn't mind going first because something actually that I didn't catch on the first one, I found out on the second one. And it may make a difference to everybody here, if they don't mind. I'll speak first on this. Mr. Giuliano, can I bring your property up on the GIS, please?
Of course, yes.
Okay. One thing that I noticed, let me just pull it up here. 33A Carmen Hill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does that look like your property, sir?
Yes, sir.
Kind of looks like the state of Oklahoma, but upside down. One thing that I did notice, and I did draw a map, so I'll ask you to come out in a minute and verify. But one thing that I did notice from the first application that I didn't catch that I caught on the second one was, you are in a R-100 zone, which is 100,000 square feet. And you typically have 2.1 acres. I double-checked, and Fran, you can verify with me. I double-checked, so he's technically a legal nonconforming that's been upzoned in that R-100 zone. He really has 80,000 and change square feet, 2.1 acres there. But it's technically an R-100. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. You might come forward, I'm just going to go over there. Okay, I did notice the difference between the last application and this application. Looks like the structure for front yard line went down approximately 10 feet from the first request. So you're looking for required dimension is 50, proposed is 40. So you're looking for a 10, 10-foot variance, correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, and then the, I believe the old square footage was around 12.
It was 12, yes.
Right, and that went down to, and that's for the apartment, to 1,120 square feet. So it went down roughly 80 square feet or so.
Correct.
So that's not great, okay. So as we look at your property, and it's kind of, it's that upside down Oklahoma look, but it's a unique shape. So you've got a long kind of driveway that comes up here. There's, there's a couple little spots, you have like the snowplow blades and stuff like that in there. As I look at this, this was, thanks for letting me go back out there, on July 3rd. Okay, so as you come up the driveway, there's kind of like two little mini pieces of blacktop there.
Yes.
One had a plow in it and there's like a car and truck here. Then there's that beautiful, I said in the last line, the beautiful white oak tree there. It's about 90 foot tall. That's staying, right?
Yes, correct.
So basically, you pushed it back a little bit so it's behind, like where you come in, I guess you'd add on to this driveway or whatever, but you kind of pushed it back from where it was before. And I know it's kind of the front yard of the property. Are these roughly, and I pulled the septic gas bill, and then I kind of drew them in here, up behind the house on the east side of the property. These is, that's your septic tank?
Yes.
And these are your fields?
Correct.
It's pretty much the majority of the backyard, right? Okay, so that's the septic. And then your well, I actually, I could see your well when I was out there. So I went from the corner of your house and I measured it. This 37 feet, sound correct?
Sounds about right, yes.
Roughly, okay, so he's got a well basically between the white oak tree and the corner of the house here. That's where his well is. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's it for my questions. Do any other members have any other questions for the applicant? Well, I guess it might help, at least for me, if you could just restate the hardship more specifically, like what would you say is exactly the hardship?
The septic in the rear of the property, it's right from the front of the property?
Right. That well in the front?
The well in the front for the 40 feet rather than 50 foot.
And then the up, the upzoning from R-100, but you're technically really like an R-8.
Correct.
What's the building code setback for the well? I actually asked on the well. And what is the gentleman that's in charge of the sanitation again?
Mr. Avery.
Okay, Mr. Avery. I did talk to him a little bit about the well because it was on a different location I was asking him. And he said if there was roughly 10 feet around it and there was plenty of access in case you ever had to redig or do something like that. But he said it's fungible. So he didn't really have an exact number to me, so I don't, I don't know it.
Right, my understanding is you could almost be right on top of the well.
It's fungible. You got to have access to it for some kind of a service and stuff.
Even if you don't. You could put it in the middle of your garage floor. It's been done.
I got you, okay. Any questions, question?
No, sir.
Madam Secretary, do you have any questions? Mr. Giuliano?
Well, I didn't know about the zoning district because on the new application, it doesn't state it.
As the hardship? Yeah, that was something that I discussed with Mr. Lally because I saw the size of his piece of property. If you, if you look at the GIS on it, actually, if you take his piece of property and the piece of property in front of it, number 33, and you add them together, that's three acres. So I think that used to be an R-100, but the lot got sliced. That's what it appears like to me. So it is technically a legal nonconforming that's been upzoned. That's, that's what it is. Any other questions, Madam Secretary? Mr. Go, sir.
What exactly does the extra 320 square feet allow you to have that 800 would not, that it's needed?
Well, it's a big difference in, I mean, it turns from a foot is...
Yeah, it's a large area.
It's livable. I mean, 800 is like a closet, you know.
800, I understand 800 is small, but...
And I could talk about that. I know you can't pronounce stuff wrong. We talked a lot about it last time as far as access and accessibility and all that stuff. It can make it a lot easier.
But you, could you have those accessibility features with an 800 square foot apartment? You can still have the expanded doorways, air rails, whatever would be required, right?
Maybe bathrooms and all that, that would be a lot smaller. It'd be very, very tough, very tough. Always on that, it'd be, it'd be very, very tough.
Can I ask you another question on the garage? So the apartment's going to be in the, the apartment's in the back or on the west side of it?
Yes.
And then here's the barn?
Yes.
How would you, where are the garage doors? You can draw them.
Garage doors will be here.
On the barn, barn slash garage?
Be here.
Okay. So you would just continue, basically, this piece of pavement that's already existing, right?
Right to it, exactly, yes.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. Thank you, sir. Do any other members have any questions?
One more, is, is your mother going to need like an aide, a live-in aide or someone? Are you going to...
No, I mean, between me, my wife, my father, we're all there, yes.
This is a completely different idea, but is there, instead, could you expand your current house to have a sort of in-law suite or an area where she could stay? So then she'd be, it would be easier to access for you and your wife, at least, since she would be in the same house rather than you needing to...
Unless you want my marriage to stay.
I'm surprised, Chairman, were you thinking of expanding onto the southern part?
Yeah, yeah, expanding on...
That was a question I was thinking too, but depending on the size, you might run into a setback issue.
You could end up still running the setback, for sure. That'd be something else you'd have to look at entirely, as a...
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure I'm pretty close to 50 feet there and not, yeah, I'm pretty...
Oh, where are the edge of your house is there now?
Yeah, 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 yes, yes, yep, yep.
Yes, sir. No questions, I'm good.
Questions, sir?
Madam Secretary, do you have any further questions?
No, no, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We already read everything into the record. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application?
Aye.
I know you're in favor, sir. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to allow you to have concluding remarks, say where...
Like I said, the town did approve bigger square footage in the past. I'm just asking for another approval. I know it's a different board, but it's on the same town. And hopefully, the stuff I changed works a little better for the town of Brookfield as well. That's why I try to give up a little bit, you know, a little give and take a little here and hopefully... That's why I try to give up a little bit, you know, a little give and take a little here, and hopefully it works for you guys, and it works for the town, it works for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giuliano. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z-23-24. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Right, deliberations, if you want to? So what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go into closed deliberations that are open to the public field. We kind of talk amongst ourselves, but nobody from outside can really speak.
I remember from last time I was falling asleep, I can't remember.
It is a labor.
Maybe we set a record this time for the opposite.
The shortest, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to take a motion to approve Z-23-36, Jim Russell residence, 69 Optusso Road. And that is already told by 24 shed. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's open discussion, who would like to go first? Commissioner Dula?
My personal opinion is I am in favor. I don't think that the hardships are...
I'm sorry, I can't hear, Elijah.
I said that as of right now, I would vote in favor of the applicant. I said I think the hardships are not the worst, but I think the hardships are there. Combined with the fact that the neighbor on every side would be upset by... By the shed being in the position where it does not require a variance. I agree, and hear Mr. Rushmeyer when he said that there are other options, that you probably could use the cliff... Or ledge, sorry, the ledge, as it is, and put the shed in the conforming position. But I also think that the ledge still can provide a hardship, hardship enough for me, again, combined with the people on every side saying, please grant the variance, don't make him put this shed where it's then going to block our view. For me, personally, that's good.
I concur.
I want to say that, I think it came more to mind when you were talking about the other application and how it was upzoned. But another hardship the applicant really didn't discuss though is, again, their lot size is 40,000 feet in a R-80 zone, which seems...
Small.
He says it's normal for the area, but it's still small for the setbacks that are to be expected of a R-80 lot.
R-80 is acre and a half, Fran, is that correct?
R-80 is two acres.
Two acres.
And he has...
Forty thousandish.
And he is point not even...
It's not even an acre.
This is half, I think.
Right, so he is zoned in R-80, so, but the setbacks seem abnormally large for what he would need. And if he had, again, this is probably more something for the zoning commission to decide to rezone properties. But if he were in a correctly sized zone, being R-40 as our table says, then it would be a 30-foot setback, which is what he's asking for. So it's not, his ask isn't abnormal for most residential lots of his size that are zoned at...
I agree, definitely agree. Commissioner Briggs?
I'm not, am I...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm trying to follow the rules.
It's not easy for me to do. Madam Secretary, what do you think?
I like the idea of what Larry said, but would that be costly to keep the shed? Where, I'm sorry, did you say something?
No, go ahead, go ahead, sorry, should let you finish, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, if you're finding ledge where the town suggested it should go, would that be costly to the owner? I don't think there's a hardship when it comes to the neighbors. I think Mr. Russell sounds like a really nice guy, and I think he's trying to accommodate his neighbors because he wants the shed. And I understand that. But is that a hardship? Would the hardship be that it would be too costly to build it on ledge, to excavate it? I think, I'm not sure if... Not sure about this one, I'm not sure about this one.
Anybody else have anything else to say?
I just think it's interesting, it's a like reverse outcome for what we'll get in a certain strict way.
I agree. I think the ledge is a hardship on his property. I didn't think about it before, but what Carl said makes sense, with the size of his property and the zone that it's in now. If it was zoned property for the size that he had, it'd be 30 feet anyways. Which is technically where he's at and what he's asking for. He also has a well that's kind of smacked, not quite in the middle of the backyard on the southern side of the property. And I understand what Larry said, hey, you can go up really close to that stuff. But I know you gotta, if you gotta well somewhere and something happens and it fails, and somebody's gotta come in there with a big machine and a rig drill, you need a decent amount of room for worst-case scenario. So I wouldn't want to go anywhere too close to that, I know you can go around that. But I agree with Carl, and I agree with Elijah, and I agree with Lisa. I think there are enough hardships on the property, I think the three neighbors were in favor of the exact location it was. So I would be inclined to approve the application. I'd like to hear what anybody else has to say. Janet, do you have anything else on that?
No, I have nothing now, thank you.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of approving, if we do approve, I'd like to put still a reservation, have an A2 survey. That's okay, everybody?
Having a what?
Make sure we have an A2 survey.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement anyway, so I don't have to worry about it. All those in favor of approving Z-23-36, Jim Russell residence, 69 Optusso Road, 12 by 24 shed, 30 feet proposed dimension to the rear lot line, and 38 feet proposed dimension to the rear sideline, or 12 feet if the variance is requested and 20 feet on the other. Say aye.
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 Janet? Okay.
Aye.
The motion is approved, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Russell, stop. All right, congratulations, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. I will take a motion to approve Z-23-24. You're on, that's fine. Yes. So move, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Who would like to go first? Richard?
Well, it certainly seems like a reasonable request, and I think, given the modifications more in the direction of compliance.
From the first application.
From the first one, yeah. But it's a more favorable possibility, I guess. And the issue of the lot size comes up here as well, so that...
The lot sum.
That's a point. As far as you were saying. So I would be in favor of approving it.
Same.
That's right, Chairman.
I understand the 10-foot request, I still have a little bit of reservation about the...
Size?
About the size, just because that isn't related to lot size or anything else, that's just a part of the...
Isn't it somewhat related to lot size, though?
In what way?
Well, the code is just 800.
The code just...
800 square feet on the accessory apartment, right?
Yeah, it just says 480 to 800 square feet. It's not, it doesn't matter if you have a 5-acre lot or a half-acre lot. Go above or below 480 to 800. And that's, I understand the reasoning for wanting it, but I think my issue comes with the fact that this does stay with the land.
20 years from the house, sells the house.
When the family moves, or when people eventually pass away, as everyone does, then you have the property that just has an abnormal, real large apartment for just because? Like, it's just the conveniency for the next homeowner that they have almost an extra 50% apartment size? That's the only issue I have. And I understand why, again, why the applicant committed now, I'm just worried about in the future.
But he did mention the consistency in size with other approvals, which was a different board, which Larry and I were probably... But...
Were you above you?
There is precedence, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's correct.
So it seemed to account the totality of the neighborhood and all that.
There, yeah. That's correct, okay.
Janet, who do you think?
Um...
Madam Secretary?
I, I'm not sure, I agree with Carl. I mean, why can't they put a door and have a mother and father apartment and just extend their house?
And attach to the house?
Yeah, I mean, why?
Well, you're gonna run into a setback issue on that sideline there. So they'd be back in front of us anyways. You know what I mean? But I understand what you're saying, Janet.
I, I think it might open up indoor box, if that's fair to say. I really sympathize with, you know, the caregivers, but I don't, I... I mean, are we opening up indoor box? And everyone is going to be doing that.
Well, they have to have specific hardships on it, would have to be somebody that would be, it's upzoned.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Then arguably it's been opened, anyway, but...
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Just because others have received it as well, it's not, this isn't the first instance of...
There'd be precedence, so... Do you guys mind if I ask Fran a question? What was the size of the one, the precedence-wise, when we were talking before, that you remembered?
Well, 1,100, I think, wasn't it 11, someone 1,100s?
I know, the applicant had mentioned something of art, like...
It was like 1180, I think.
You can't take that any further.
Yeah, the applicant had mentioned 1180 or 11... No, I don't know what specific one, but...
So there is some precedence in the past, even though it's a different board and stuff like that, but it's happened there.
I think one was 1,000, I think, and one was maybe 1,100, if I remember right.
Were any of those upzoned?
I can't recall.
Anybody else have anything for her?
What did he say? What did he say?
Oh, he didn't recall about the upzoning, but he did remember precedence for other ones at various sizes, 1150, maybe...
There was at least two.
There was at least two in the past, but that was a different board, a different time.
And under different circumstances.
Yeah, and totally different circumstances. Here's, here's how I see it. I didn't catch it the first time, but after I looked further into it and did more homework, he's definitely upsized. You can tell exactly what they did. It used to be an R-100, and they chopped a lot, for whatever reason, whenever they did it. So instead of 100,000 square feet, he's really at 80,000 and change. So he is a legal non-conforming that has been upsized, nothing to do with him, that's just the way the property is. It does have a unique shape, when you come up the driveway, it looks like an upside-down Oklahoma to me. But he has, he's already confined to the size of his property for the zone that he should have technically been in. So that is an issue. The well is there, I understand what Larry said about the well and stuff. Just me in general, being a technician, but in a different business, electrical, I like to have room. And I've seen guys come in with the wells and the rigs if they had to re-drill holes and test holes and all the other stuff. But it's a big machinery and stuff. I understand what Carl said and suggesting, what you suggested, Janet, about maybe just adding on the house. But he's gonna come back and he's gonna need a right-side variance something, because if he's right at 50 foot where it's at now, it just depends on the size that he puts in there. I did have a little bit of an issue with the size of it, but it did shrink down. Both, the structure, the front lot line went down 10 feet from the prior application, which I thought was good. And it did go down, went down a little bit, not a lot, but about 80 square feet on the side of the apartment. So I'm inclined, because of the upzoning and the well, you can't do anything in the back of the house, forget about it, because the septic field's there. So I'm inclined to approve the application, but I'd like to hear from anybody else, anybody else. And he's keeping that beautiful 90-foot white oak. If anybody saw, it's the most beautiful tree I've seen, white oak.
The fact that the space is gonna be used for, I guess, Mr. Giuliano's mother, who's, I understand, has some level of disability. Do we consider the disability as a factor in...
I don't know, I don't know if we can. It's not really hardship of the land, right?
Yeah, that's the issue.
Well, I was just thinking about the, not the, I was thinking about it in terms of the space, the size of the, of the space. Whether the issue of disability figures into whether, you know, it's 800 versus 1,100 square feet.
I don't, I honestly don't think that we consider that, because it's not technically a hardship of the land, that's my opinion. I can, Mr. Lally, what do you think?
No, you can't.
Yeah, I think if there's, again, any sort of state regulations that say that people with disabilities are entitled to a larger lot area, or a larger space, that would be one thing, but this, this isn't bad.
Yeah, I do take into consideration the precedents that the other boards have, to a moment, and I realize that we're a different board and stuff, but the... Other boards have seen things in different scenarios and situations, and everything is unique that comes in front of us. I think the non-conforming upzoned is a real big hardship on his property, in my opinion. So I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
It sounded to me like if you don't give the extra space, then it kind of... ...vitiates the whole plan, you know, because, but from a practical perspective.
Yeah, you have the garage one side and the shrink the apartment down here, 100 square feet. It did make sense to me how he was doing it, when Mr. Giuliano came in and threw it up. Because where he moved it back to, when I went in to look at his property, okay, he has his main driveway, which is paved, it's just coming straight up to the house. Then there was a little patch of driveway, right there, he had like a snowplow in it. And then right here, there was like another little patch of driveway that had like a car and a truck in it. But he's basically just gonna continue this little patch right between here and there, and you're right into the garage. So that kind of does make sense, you know, location-wise to me. It just makes practical sense as well. That's how I see it. What do you think, Madam Secretary?
Um, I kind of agree with you, I... I have nothing, thank you, yeah.
Everybody ready to vote? Everybody comfortable? Okay. All those in favor of approving Z-23-24, Kristen and Justin Giuliano residence, that is a barn with living quarters. It's a 10-foot variance to the front lot line, and a 320 square foot variance for a total of 1,120 square feet on the apartment. Say aye. Aye. Madam Secretary?
Oh, did everybody say aye?
Yeah, everybody said aye, well, I'll do it again. All those in favor say aye? Aye! Yes, four of us said aye. Are you an aye?
Yes, I am an aye.
Okay. The application is approved, and that's unanimous.
No, it's not.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't have call for nay vote.
Oh, sorry.
They voted aye.
All those, sorry, sorry, I apologize. All those not in favor of the application, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So we have four for approval and one for not approval, so the motion passes four to one. Thank you, sir, about that. I was saying, yes, a lot of you. Okay, thank you very much, congratulations, Sean.
All right.
All right. Moving on. In formal discussion, uh, this will be really fast, this is an update from, uh, State Senator Steve Harding on a proposed General Assembly raise bill, everybody remember that, nine fifteen?
Yeah.
From several meetings ago?
Yeah.
I think it was a month and a half or two months ago, I spoke in person to Senator Harding, and his exact words were, it never made it through committee, and he thanked.
Right, it was a kibosh in the, in the committee.
Never made it out of committee.
I spoke to him already.
Yep, and he thanked us very much again for the letter and said it helped. So that's.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, that's aye. Feel up to the discussion on those cases.
I can do that.
Okay. So next on the agenda is discussion of training cases decisions, Morikawa, RV, zoning board of appeals, town of Weston, and Jasser versus zoning board of appeals of the city of Milford. I didn't reread them again, I read them like two months ago, so I was counting on you.
A okay, but my computer's not working.
I have it, if you want.
No, I have them, I just did like a summary, one second.
Can you hear okay? Madam Secretary?
I'll try to sift through this.
Yeah, is Lisa speaking?
Yes, hi.
Okay.
Um, I'm just gonna give a short, um, overview, I'm gonna start with the one I have open, which is Jasper, is that what it's called? Jess, Jess, Jasser.
Yeah, George, George Jasser.
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 J A S E R.
And this case happened to be very similar, if not almost exactly the same, as one we had a few months ago. The plaintiffs owned a property, um, it was very small, um, and they were seeking to construct a single-family residence on the property. And they bought the property with the setbacks, and then they claimed the hardship due to the unusual shape of the building area restricted, and was restricted by title wetlands. So the zoning board of appeals, um, they went from the zoning board of appeals, uh, because they wanted a bigger house, they wanted something, um, they liked better than what was restrict, you know, the restricted area in the lands, and the ZBA denied the variance application stating that there was no evidence that was presented to establish a hardship and that the approval had been granted for nonconforming lot based on compliance with setback requirements. So, um, then the, the, um, Jas, Jasser, um, then appealed the ZBA findings, um, and the court sustained the appeal and granted, the, actually granted the variance, um, and then the ZBA appealed this decision.
Judge Mina is your first.
And reversed it back to what the ZBA, um, originally claimed, um, and the holding was that, um, the court impermissively substituted his judgment for the board, um, a lot of deference is given to the ZBA, which is good for us. And this is because, um, a hardship was not shown, because the plaintiffs admitted that they, that a conforming house could have been built on a lot, although may not have been exactly the type that they desired. So that was that one.
And they, and they knew what the terms when they bought the property.
Yes, yeah, and I think we had a case just like that.
Yeah, that's right.
So, um.
The other one, Morikawa, I wrote an old note from when you were speaking about the floating fireplace one, the de minimis exception, is that this one?
That's this one, the floating fireplace, if you guys remember that.
Yeah, I, I wrote a note when, when you said it.
Was that the first one, you said the fireplace?
Uh, yeah, I remember the one with the floating fireplace and can with shorts.
Yes, they do, yes, they do, yeah.
There's no, uh, self, self-created slash self-inflicted hardship to minimis, that, that was my note.
Yeah. So the ZBA was very sympathetic to them, actually, and this is in Weston, um, and allowed, um, let's see, um, they allowed a roof to exceed thirty-five feet in height, um, so that, that was challenged.
By two feet, seven inches, yeah.
Yeah, 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 exactly, almost three feet, so.
Challenged by neighbors?
Uh, yes. So it started off with the homeowner, homeowners applied for a building permit, um, the code enforcement officer found that the height was in excess of the roof height restrictions, so then they resubmitted the plans, so they were on notice that what they were originally gonna do was.
Too, too tall.
Not kosher. Um, so they resubmitted the plans and met the requirements, but then what happened was the contractors built the house to the original plans.
The contractor goofed.
Yes, and so, um, and so then the zoning, um, the code enforcement officer gave them a cease and desist order, this sounds familiar, and then, um, the homeowners appealed the cease and desist, the ZBA upheld the cease and desist, but allowed them to apply for a variance, claiming that they relied on contractors and an architect who did not check periodically the height of the roof, so they were, um.
I think they know where this one's gonna end.
Yeah. The code enforcement officer, they claimed, failed to monitor the construction, so it was the code enforcement officer's fault.
Right into that.
And the excess height would not affect the surrounding areas, um, the house is set back from the street, the lands, uh, and the lands to the rear of the house is owned by a land trust, no harm will foul, and they were claiming it's such a small infraction that de minimis rule, they were claiming there's a de minimis rule saying like, it's only a few feet, guys, no big deal.
It's two foot seven, don't worry about it.
Um, so then, uh, the ZBA was convinced, um, of the, and based their determination on the de minimis theory, and, um, on the neighborhood setting, the sitting of the house, that was, uh, one of their purported, um, rationales, which makes no sense, and what they just cited as quote unquote topography, so these were the things that were put into the zoning variance approval. Um, so the neighbors were pissed off, and they appealed the ZBA decision, they claimed that the, um, uh, the, the court actually sustained, um, the ZBA decision, they appealed it again, um, and they found basically that the, the defendant's hardship was self-created, even though they used, um.
They hired the builder, right?
Yes.
They, they hired the builder.
The, uh, yes, and the code enforcement officer was not responsible for their hardship.
Makes perfect sense to me.
And, um, what else? There is no such thing as de minimis deviations.
So you can't say, oh, it's only small, that's.
Close enough doesn't count.
You're close enough doesn't count. Thank you.
Still only in horseshoes.
Did that make sense to you, Janet, Madam Secretary?
It did, the way Lisa said it, it only takes a boy to explain. Yes, I did.
No, that makes perfect sense to me. You guys have any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Sure, same time.
That's good. Let's see, moving on. So discussion of possible amendment to Title Nine of the ZBA bylaws, already adding Connecticut general statute, uh, fifty-three A dash one fifty-seven B citation. Well, um, the reason, I, I, I put this one on there, and I have a, a picture of the actual statute on here. Remember back, Elijah, you were big in this discussion, we were talking about oaths and stuff like that for witnesses, and then you said, well, why the heck do they give us the ability to do this if there's, there's no recourse, if they don't tell the truth or anything on it?
Right.
So I, quite by accident, I found, by filling out a form at the, uh, Department of Emergency Services in Connecticut, but I saw the quotation on this particular statute, so I said, well, I'm gonna go look up that statute, and it made absolute perfect sense, so I wanted to discuss it, and then, and we can wait until Nahid gets back, but just adding the citation for it under our bylaws. Here's the actual statute, and when I read it out loud, I think it'll make perfect sense, so, and I said, yeah, gee, why do they give this if there was no teeth behind it? What, what can you do? So here's, here's the statute, it's fifty-three A dash one fifty-seven, false statement, uh, class A misdemeanor, a person is guilty, it's not a good picture, of a false statement when such person one, intentionally makes a false written statement that such person does not be believed to be true with the intent of misleading a public servant in the performance of such public servant's official function, and two, make such statement under oath or pursuant to a form bearing notice authorized by law to the effect that false statements made therein are punishable. And it's a. It's a class A misdemeanor. So that is actually, that's the tape behind it, I guess the legislators thought about it, uh, we just didn't know what it was. Anyways, a class A misdemeanor, uh, it's the most serious misdemeanor and charges in Connecticut, charges come on a maximum of one year in jail and a potential fine of two thousand dollars, an example of a class A misdemeanor is the possession of a controlled substance. So this particular statute, um, a hundred percent pertains to us, and I wanted to see if just that citation, under Title Nine, we don't have to do it now, we can wait for Nahid when she gets back, if we can put that citation, because if we do have it in here, in order to enforce it, you gotta have it noticed somewhere, you know, referenced.
Sure.
Is that noticed, though?
Yeah, well, it's here, and it's also on our application, the ZBA application, now, the application's been updated and included that citation, um, but I figured that particular citation, I think it's under Nine, all right? Yeah, under administering oats, I just wanted to add it under, uh, old Connecticut general statute, we have eight dot five and one twenty-five, both for witnesses, and then just basically somewhere in there, add that particular statute, uh, because that's, that's the teeth behind it. That's it. Does everybody wanna wait, and we can table that, and Nahid can get back.
Just as a question, so are we saying that we're going to swear in anybody that speaks as a ZBA Indian? Because one of the other things we're discussing is, it'd be difficult to pick and choose who we're going to put on the road, if we're going to go with it, then everybody needs to be put on the road, and everybody needs to know that whatever you say is punishable, because otherwise, then we could keep, uh, picking and choosing, why did you pick this person or that person?
Absolutely right, yeah, and, and I thought about that, I was asking, it's something that I, I believe swearing somebody in, it should be rare and only in a certain extent, I know we discussed this before, where, let's say you had an application coming in front of you, and they were through the application without prejudice or whatever it was, and they were coming back in front of you, but you weren't too sure about the information or the answers that they gave the first time, yeah, at that point, I would swear every applicant in, just to be perfectly fair and honest with everybody.
Well, if I understand this correctly, um, it's a misdemeanor to lie to a public official, whether you're sworn in or not.
Yeah.
You don't have to be sworn in.
Yeah, but to apply it, you have to, you have to have it in a couple of locations, like that fifty-three A one fifty-seven is now that little citation, the verbiage, but that is in our regular application, but we don't have it in our bylaws, like if somebody could read it online, I just wanted to make a notation to it.
Right, I was just saying, and it's not what I was saying, but, uh.
Yeah.
The swearing in is not a requisite component to the application of a misdemeanor, so if you're in our bylaws, then you're serving.
Two purposes, yeah.
This is the case, that, just as public information.
That's exactly right, that's, that's how I see it. Any questions on that, here?
Just, uh, for practitioners, so you're saying that if the only notice, when they say form bearing notice, is as long as it's in our bylaws, you don't, is that giving people notice that people expect it to read the bylaws before they're probably, is it?
No, we don't, but we also have it on our application, if we have one in the new one, but I know it's put on the new one, but it's now.
It's on the application.
Yeah, it's now on the bottom of the application. It wasn't before, but it's, it was updated, an application, I don't think it's been updated for twenty, thirty years either, but that little bit of verbiage and that citation is on the application, so it's there, but I figured to put it in the bylaws, because if somebody does happen to go in, they're looking, and they're reading through the bylaws, I don't know if individuals will look that up, I found it by total accident.
Yeah, I, I understand, like, if we're already in the swearing in part citing other statutes, we might as well give people that are, decide to read through it entirely.
That's the statute, yeah, that statute, I think that statute's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
So no, we're gonna put it in, let's do it.
You want to just vote on it now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's just sit in, well, we should have five on us.
Yeah.
Larry, you're next, sir. Could you be seated for this vote?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of adding the citation only for, uh, Connecticut general statute fifty, fifty-three A dash one fifty-seven B, that says one fifty-seven, but it's been, it's been changed now, the exact same one, the B, they don't show the B in there, but it is technically B now, I don't know why they changed it before then. Anyways, all those in favor of adding just the citation only, uh, Connecticut general statute fifty-three A dash one fifty-seven B to Article Nine, which is an administering, administering votes, um, Lisa, could you, if this gets approved, just go over to Janet, the exact spot to put it, anywhere in that.
Okay.
Say aye.
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 Aye. And that is five. So that is a unanimous vote, so that will be added. Um, Madam Secretary, will you, um, communicate with Lisa, figure out the best place to put that?
I, yeah, I'd be happy to add it, um, I don't have to lie, well, who told me, but I don't, who's gonna be sending me, um.
You have a copy.
This citation.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Uh, Lisa will send that to you, she'll email that over to you?
Perfect.
Okay, and that's, uh, remember this thing's, it should be, this one should be it.
Okay.
Okay.
Could we go, I have a comment or a question?
Yes.
Anybody comment on negligence of a violation is not Brown's jurisdiction, am I correct?
That's, that's the way.
So regardless of whether it's in there, you can't say, well, I didn't know about the law.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
Negligence, negligence of the laws in the past.
Yeah, but I did read somewhere, when I was looking up the, the, the statute itself, I read somewhere that you have to have, not, none of them saying this posted, but it's gotta be somewhere so that people can, people can say, hey, look at it, it was on the application, hey, look at it, it was in the ZBA bylaws, you should have read it. They could have Googled it, they could Google it.
It should be fairly common knowledge that you shouldn't be lying on, lying to a public official, I don't think you need to.
I didn't know that you couldn't make up a total fabricated story. I was surprised.
Okay, last one, that I'd like to go over here, and moving on to you. Now, this is discussion of letter of support for a new special permit for a two oh two Candle Lake Road. I know you were out of the room at the time, but I'll go over.
I, I've watched the.
Have you watched the video on it?
Watched the video.
Okay. So Nahid had brought it up, Richard had brought it up, and I said, even before we voted on it, I said, no matter what happens, I think that's a fantastic idea to write some type of letter in support, uh, and they even said, hey, if they go in front of them, we'll, we'll show up there, as a group.
Are they going to, definitely going to?
Mr. Chairman, may I just see, I mean, there's no application in front of the zoning commission right now, so I would ask not to move forward with this right here, because this is not ZBA's purview, there's case law on this, it's been denied already, so to, for the ZBA to send a letter to zoning to open this application is totally inappropriate, and I've talked to council today about that, too.
All right, I haven't talked to, the council hasn't spoken to me, I don't know. One, can we listen till I talk to Mrs. Schomer, I haven't heard anything at all about that, I don't see which one.
Well, that was gonna be my two cents on it, anyway. I mean, we don't need to discuss it if we don't want to right now.
There's no application in front of it, we discuss, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's ever been a discussion, but I was going to bring up Frank's mention, anyway.
Right, there isn't any application in front of zoning to, uh.
Advocate.
To advocate for in the first place.
We'd also all have to accuse her, so we send a letter.
All right, that make sense to you, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so what we can always do is, if we find out that there is an application coming up, we have, we can write a letter of support if we want to.
It should not come from the ZBA, it should come from each individual if you want to write a letter, should not come from the commission.
Really? I don't think it's, if.
It's not the ZBA's.
We supported as cit, as private citizens, this one thing, but I don't think we, as a board, should be telling other commissions how to do their job.
Correct.
Regarding what we think they should have, we think they should give an application, they don't send us letters saying, hey, you should allow this variance, hey, you should, because we would tell them to butt out, that's our decision, not theirs.
But you have all the right as an individual to write whatever you want.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Public hearing. It's a public hearing, as an individual.
But they don't come in here and tell us how to rule on our variances, and I don't think we should tell them how to handle their, uh, special permits. That's my opinion.
That's right. Madam Secretary, you have anything on that?
Yeah, like, I, you know, that's a good point, Carl, I, I, I don't think I would like that. I mean, we didn't like it for having any interference from the land use department, um, so, I, I, I tend to agree with that, um...
But if something comes up, we have the right to speak as individuals, if we want to.
Yeah, and sending it individually, would they know us? I mean, like, let's face it, we would have to, I just said citizens.
You can say whatever you want in your private letter, just as long as it's not, it's not the ZBA endorsing it.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
You support your sense to me. Alright.
I think it's innocent, I think it's innocent to do that, but not, not put, you know, that we're affiliated on this with the ZBA.
Thank you.
But I agree with Carl, I don't think I would like that.
Thank you, Mr. Lawley, you're up for that, thank you. Does anybody else have any other informal discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Vice Chairman, would you like to make your favorite motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
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 Aye.